The Real Hustle Podcast, hosted by Chris Kiblin. Real hustle, real people, real results.
What's up, man?
Hey, Chris, how you doing?
Glad to have you back.
Thanks for having me.
So I was like, alright, have to have you back. We had you on, what, probably about a year ago, right?
Yeah, it was over a year ago. Yeah, I think so, it was like maybe.
And you were running for the county commission for Manatee at that time. You just got started and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're the new commissioner or county commissioner, right? County Commissioner for Manatee. So I really wanted to have you back because this is kind of an exciting thing. First of all, you beat out somebody that's been in that spot for what?
16 years.
16 years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so obviously it wasn't, I mean, you had a tough opponent, right?
Of course, yeah, she was really tough.
But kind of first, before we get into some of this stuff, because my biggest question when it comes to politics and it comes to what you've done is how did you get started? How do you, like, walk me through the process of, okay, alright, this is how I decided I wanted to run for this. Then how do you register to say that you want to run for that? Because like, you know, I don't think many people know how you really get started.
Yeah, so, um, you know, when it comes to running for any public office, you know, I truly believe that you have to have a calling on your life. You know, I mean, it's just not like one day I wake up and it's like, oh, I want to run for public office. Now, I know there are some people that kind of prepare their whole life for that.
Right.
Right? But it wasn't something that I ever really thought about, right? Exactly, it wasn't really like something that I was preparing my whole life to be a politician. Um, so I believe that I got, you know, a complete calling of God to do this and, um, you know, it was a difficult decision because, you know, at that time, it was like, alright, do you really want to do this? Because I knew that like it was going to take a lot of sacrifice. I knew it was going to take a lot of hard work. And it took me about six months before I said, okay, I'm going to go ahead and file. So, you know, it was, uh, it was a lot because, you know, you sacrifice a lot in the process.
So how do you file for, they become, tell you that way you put your name on the ballot?
Yeah, so essentially you go down to the supervisor of elections. Every county has one and there's some form that you have to fill out and you just tell them, hey, I want to, I want to go ahead and file for a particular seat and, and then your name, uh, becomes, uh, well, you have to qualify. Once you, once you sign the applications, then you have to qualify. So you can either get, uh, in Mante County, uh, there's a certain number of petitions that you have to have signed or you can pay a qualifying fee.
Okay.
Which I roughly, I think it's roughly $5,000 for the Mante County Commissioner seat.
Okay.
Or it was 20, I believe it was 2,700, a little over 2,700 petitions signed.
So that's 27 people had to sign some?
2,700 people.
Had to sign this?
Had to sign a petition saying that I could be on the ballot.
Gotcha.
Yep, and there's, it's a, it's a particular form, you know, has their name, their address, their birth date. And then you take those petitions, which I qualified by petition.
Okay.
And then they take them up to the supervisor of elections and then they kind of look over each and every one of them to make sure they're verified.
Okay, because that's what I was gonna ask you, did you get by petition or did you get by money?
Yeah, no, I went by petition and got almost 4,000 petitions signed, which was a lot of work.
How did you get those? Like, have you just reached out to everybody?
You know, I mean, just reaching out to everybody. Um, I know I was 10 days at the Mante County State Fair where I was able to get at least a thousand of those.
Wow.
Um, so it's a lot of interaction. Um, I had some people that were actually helping me too, that supported me, that kind of went out and said, hey, can you get, you know, X amount of petitions signed? And they would, which I think honestly, getting those petitions were a big deal because I don't know when the last time somebody that was at large, now I know in a specific district, they would get petitions signed, it's not that many, it's like maybe 500 qualified. Um, but with mine, it's like 2,700 qualified, so you gotta take that times five, take that number times five, right?
Right.
Um, and they have to be registered voters.
Oh, wow.
And so, um, if there's a, if there's a autograph that's, or a signature that's, that's, that's wrong or a birthday, they throw it out.
Wow.
So there was, yeah, so I had to get at least 4,000 to ensure that I got, yeah, the 2,700, yeah.
So why, so we got to that part, but why, um, Manatee County Commissioner? Why did you choose that one?
Yeah, you know, I see a lot of things that within our county that, you know, we need to do, you know? Um, going into this, we were about 15 years behind on our infrastructure, right? That's one reason.
Okay.
And so every time we sit in traffic, there's a reason why we're sitting in traffic, right? And so I saw that, hey, you know, if, if I run for county commissioner, this is something that I could really help in regards to speeding up that process, infrastructure process. The second, uh, reason why was, um, you know, with everything that's going on within the last couple of years, um, I recognize that, you know, we had people who, in my opinion, breached our constitution, right, with all the mandates.
Like mask and that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, and, and with me, I think that if we've raised our right hand, which I have and you have, to defend the constitution, that's essentially what I will always do for the rest of my life. And I just felt like there's a lot of elected officials that kind of overstep their boundaries and maybe they don't, they don't understand their true oath.
Right.
And so I felt it that it was my duty to, you know, actually go out and continue to defend the constitution of the United States of America, right? And to live in the freedom in this great state that we all live in, in Florida too. I mean, not everybody's like us.
No.
You know?
It's kind of crazy.
So I mean, I think that was the main reason. And then, you know, we had secondary reasons, which is like infrastructure and things like that. I know I started off with infrastructure, but, you know, the main reason was to defend our constitution.
Because you were seeing stuff that really you just didn't believe in, so that made you want to go against it, right?
Correct, it kind of sparked a fire in me to, you know, do, because if, what I don't want is 30 years from now, look at my kids or my grandkids and say, you know, I had a chance to do something and I didn't do it.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure that I didn't have any regrets saying, you know, hey, you know, this is the country I handed you.
Exactly.
You know, and I want to say that, hey, I did everything I could do and this is where we're at if it so happens to go down that road, that path, so.
So let's talk about it because you did, um, take somebody that was in that seat, you took over, you did beat out somebody that had been in there for 16 years.
Yeah.
Talk to me, because this is kind of an interesting part for me. This is why I really kind of wanted to also have you on the podcast is because, talk to me about the campaigning part, because I know, I know we've talked a little bit about it and just in brief as I've run into you, but like the campaigning part sounded like it was, it was tough, right?
Yeah, it's pretty gruesome. I mean, um, so typically in Manatee County particularly, the way that they ran campaigns was, you know, there's few people that would, you know, donate into a campaign and then they would run mailers, okay? And mailers would match up against somebody that may be not able to raise money. And, you know, always the people that could raise the money would essentially win.
Right.
In my case and the case after me, um, I knew that I had to run a grassroots campaign. Nobody knew who I was, so I knew I needed to get out there. Now, I have a business background and a marketing background that kind of helped me in this process, but I knew that I had to contact people, I had to be in front of the people every day. I had to run grassroots, I had to get volunteers, um, and do a lot of face-to-face interaction, which I think is the most effective when you're running for any type of campaign because what typically happens when you have that face-to-face interaction, um, they end up telling two or three more people, which I recognized big time. Um, and then raising money, right? Um, you gotta raise money. So in order for me to make an impact or, you know, have a foothold in the campaign, I had to raise some money to get my message out.
Right.
And, you know, I ran, my first fundraiser was pretty successful. I think we raised like $36,000, which was awesome. Um, that kind of gave me a jumpstart in doing what I needed to do, uh, to really get my name out there. And then I started running like, uh, target, I started early.
Okay.
I started really early. Typically, people don't start spending money as early as I did, but I knew that I had to continue to get that traction because I knew they were going to have negative ads against me. Um, so I needed people to judge me before, um, the negative stuff.
Started.
Started, right? And I needed, I needed to make sure that people knew who I was before the negatives started coming out. Um, and so I started spending money a lot earlier than most people and, um...
What were you spending it on? What kind of stuff?
Uh, digital ads.
Like Facebook?
Yeah, I was spending a lot of money on Facebook and spending some money on some other things, but, um, I knew how to run Facebook ads, you know, and, uh, realize that, you know, this was, my name was getting out there big time, you know? I started recognizing it when I was going out in town, that people started recognizing me, yeah, because of the ads that I was running.
That was the thing is like, I mean, I had you on the show and then people would, that saw you on the show, like I'd run into, they'd be like, hey, what's going with that guy, Jason? Yeah, I saw him, like, he's out running everywhere. He's like, I saw his name somewhere. And, you know, so, I mean, your name was growing quite a bit in our community.
Correct.
I mean, you know, it's funny because, you know, we feel kind of like a big little city here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's small enough that everybody kind of knows who everybody else is, especially, I hate to say this, but even like, maybe not that you say it, but in the real estate world, which we both are part of, um, you know, everybody does know everybody.
Correct.
So in that particular world, we all kind of know, um, you know, and it is still a small place here.
Yeah, it is.
It's not, it's, you know, Bradenton and, and, and Manatee County is not that big.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, you would go, I'd be going to the store or whatever and, you know, I mean, we've run into stores all, each other all the time.
Correct.
You know, and so like I saw your name growing quite a bit and your signs going up everywhere and, you know, and it was like, you know, wow, this is really kind of cool to watch because I've never, like, I've never really known anybody that went through the politic process, like to get voted in, right? And I, I mean, I've, I've watched people, I've heard of people, I've met people, but like I've never seen anybody through the process. And it was a cool process to watch because, and see what you've done and just your overwhelming support that you got because I think everybody realized it was time for a change.
Yep.
And they realized, look, we can't keep going down the same road that we've been going, right?
Correct.
And so, and I think that's the same message we get in Florida.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, with the results that happened, I mean, and not just that, I mean, now we have, uh, a 7-0 conservative board in Mante County. We had Amanda Ballard, who was in District 2, who has been heavily a Democratic district and it was flipped the first time since 1994.
Wow, that's a long time.
So, I mean, that's almost 30 years, right? And so, and, and she won that by almost 17 points.
Jeez.
She ran a pretty solid grassroots campaign as well. And so that just tells me that grassroots, like, it works, like, I mean, it's a lot of work. I mean, if anybody's wanting to run for office, I'm just gonna let you know now, like, you're not gonna be home, uh, it's gonna be late nights.
Because that's what I was gonna ask you, I mean, you're, you know, you got a family, young, young kids, um, you're out campaigning a lot. I mean, that's gotta be tough on your wife, it's gotta be tough on your kids.
Yep.
Right? Because, I mean, you were probably at, what, I mean, every other night, every night?
Every other night, every night, yeah. I mean, it's a sacrifice for sure, so like, anybody that's ever considering running for office, just know that it's going to be a sacrifice if you have a family, it's going to be a sacrifice on your family. Your wife needs to understand, you know, hey, this is what we're getting ourselves into, you know, these, it's gonna be late nights and when I, and, and after the campaign, the, the job hasn't even started yet, now the job starts. Now, you know, for Mante County, I mean, it's almost 420,000 people in the county.
Wow.
So I represent the whole county, so like I have to be everywhere all the time, I have to be answering to constituents all over the county. And so, um, it's a lot of work, you know, and, uh, but it's, 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 it's good work, it's, it's awesome, you know? And it's an honor and a privilege to be able to get to do this and represent people from Manatee County for sure.
So, well, now, I know you got your other marketing, because you got your other job that you do. Will this now take priority over that job? I mean, as far as what you're doing or?
Well, I think, yeah, so my main thing is, is like, I've got a couple of businesses that I do, it's just not the marketing business.
Okay.
I've also got a credit card processing business that I run as well. Uh, I think nothing takes priority. I mean, obviously the county will always take priority, um, when things need to get done.
Alright.
Okay? First and foremost. Um, but I think with me now, it takes a lot more organization to ensure that I can get everything done or I just task out and hire people.
Do the business stuff.
Exactly, which, you know, is most likely that's the direction that I'm gonna have to go.
Right.
Um, because I definitely, when I'm, when I'm working for the county, that's gonna take a priority over a lot of the things that I'm doing.
Right.
You know, so.
So now, as far as being the county commissioner, now you're in this role, you're about to be sworn in, what, next week?
Next Tuesday, yeah.
Next Tuesday. So, and then effectively that Tuesday is when you actually start the job, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So give us some of the job responsibilities that you will have in, in, in that world.
Yeah, so, so once I'm sworn in, um, I essentially set policy for the county. I approve rezonings, I look at the overall picture of kind of what we need and try to influence, um, others that are on the board to actually see the vision of, of the direction that, that we need to go. Um, I work with, you know, um, essentially the whole county, right? So, um, you know, managing, uh, over a billion dollar budget.
Wow.
You know, so it's, it's, there's a lot that goes, goes on within the county, but, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, I'm going to be, um, working with the others to ensure that, you know, our county is moving in to the right direction and just essentially watching your tax dollars, making sure that we're not wasting any tax dollars. I, I know that, you know, that seems to be a, a thing of the past where we've just kind of just spend just to spend. And, uh, you know, with my educational background, I think that we're going to be able to, um, see spots where money being spent maybe doesn't necessarily need to be spent.
Right.
And so, you know, that's essentially what I'm doing is, is kind of looking over your budget, ma- making sure that our tax dollars are not being wasted.
That's a big thing. I mean, that's what, you know, a lot of people, I mean, you know, because you're talking about hardworking Americans who've paid into taxes or whatever these taxes are.
Yep.
And then, you know, when they, they want to make sure that their money isn't being spent wastefully, right? So, I mean, you know, because unfortunately as the government right now, we see that of overall government, right? Um, you know, and so it, you know, on the local, and I think with what you're doing on the local level, these guys have somewhat of a hope of what's going on, you know, and hopefully we can keep growing that into where, you know, and I think even in our state level, we see that. I think, you know, with what we just seen, but overall, as far as federal government, that's another story.
Yeah.
So, you know?
And we have a really awesome opportunity for economic growth in Manatee County. I mean, I think that, I mean, we have CENTCOM up the road, you know, I think it's a great opportunity to bring companies in, into the actual county to create jobs, you know, um, good paying jobs, you know, that I, I think it's just an awesome opportunity in the county. We have, you know, the, the means to be able to do that. And so, you know, we have the port, which is awesome, and then we have the fastest-growing airport in the nation.
Which I didn't, I didn't even know that until you just told me that a couple of minutes ago before we started the show. I had no idea that our airport was the fastest-growing. I know we're getting like, because I remember before, like, you didn't even have like Southwest here.
It's grown.
You know, it's growing and I know it, but I didn't realize it was the fastest-growing one. And then I didn't even realize we had a port here. Like, that's, I, I thought everything was up in Tampa.
Yeah, I mean, we have the closest, uh, port to the Panama Canal and I don't, we haven't used it to its fullest, full capacity yet. And I think that we have an opportunity to really maximize on our port and be able to, you know, really take that up to the next level.
Where's the port at?
It's right, um, if you look, it's like south of 275, right there, kind of in Palmetto, like west of Palmetto.
Up in that area?
Yeah, northwest, yeah.
Okay. So, and then we got the airport, which is growing like crazy and that, you know, and I, like, you see more and more airlines that are now trying to come into, um, our area, into Sarasota area. Because I think it's just the growth that we're seeing, right? And, um, I think we're one of the fastest-growing communities. I know we're, like Lakewood Ranch is one of the fastest-growing, was it, um, what do they call it?
We're almost built out, believe it or not, there's two more plots that are in Lakewood Ranch and they're being developed right now. And once those two are developed, we're gonna be fully built out in Lakewood Ranch.
So now?
So now we're looking at, well, we're looking at Parish area, right? Uh, that's gonna be the new North River Ranch and that whole area is, is going to be an area where a lot of people are gonna want to move to. Um, it's gonna be up and coming, so that's an up and coming area.
And it's just like they, you know, for a while there, they couldn't build them fast enough, right?
Yeah.
And then now it's like, okay, well, market shifted a little bit, but they're still coming. Um, you know, people are still coming, you know, and you still see the thing and, and I was having this conversation with somebody and, you know, we were talking about, you know, without bringing too much politics into this, but we were talking about like other states and the reason, and we're having other states that a lot of people are trying to get out of those states to come here, um, because of what we have to offer. And so, you know, we were talking about it and we've, we're like, we're thinking and we're talking, we're like, probably some of those other states didn't do as well because they moved here or they moved to Texas.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's like, so one of the things is because we have grown a lot. I remember when I first moved here, there was no mall, there was no roundabout, there was none of this stuff. And just to watch how this area has grown, you know, and I, you know, I'm being in the mortgage world and seeing that real estate world, it's just like, you know, when I have conversations with people, you know, one of the things that they love about Florida is their state income tax.
Yep.
And so they love coming here for that and they love talking about that. And they're like, look, I can get out of these other states with these high income, state income taxes and that pretty much covers my mortgage. So what I was paying in state income tax now covers my mortgage. That's kind of a, it was kind of an epiphany when I had somebody tell me that and I was like...
That's crazy.
That's kind of crazy, right? So if you're paying 10, 15, 20 grand a year in state income tax, that's your, that could be your mortgage. What if you're, you're paying, you know, okay, so if you're paying $2,000, $3,000 a month, right? Okay, what you're paying in state income tax is now your mortgage.
Yep.
You're saving all that money. And so that's where a lot of people, they look at it and they say, it makes sense to move to Florida now. It makes sense to get here because of just that one little piece. And it's pretty awesome.
Well, you know, Governor Ron DeSantis did a great job with this state, you know, and what we've recognized in the last, you know, couple of years is people moved here because of the opportunity, because of freedom, you know? I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we gained, I mean, we're getting a thousand people a day moving into Florida.
That's insane, you know, if you think about it.
A thousand people, I mean, that's significant. And, you know, they're not moving, most of them are moving to Manatee County.
Yeah.
A lot of them are. And guess what? Fort Myers Market, which was a big market, has completely been destroyed. So what do you think they're going, gonna come now? They're gonna come up here.
Right.
So, you know, Manatee County is, is definitely a great county, you know, if anybody has a little bit of work ethic, they can make anything happen here. And that's, that's, that's America and that's why I love it here and I love this county and, um, and because, you know, you can, you can do anything you would like to do here if you had any type of work ethic, you could build a business, you know, you could become very successful here. It's just an awesome place to live.
No, it's been, it did wonders for me. Like, I can tell you, I mean, I came from Maryland and Baltimore and I came down here, moved down here in 2014 and, you know, and I got a fresh start down here and I had the work ethic. And it was like, okay, so I built something and it was like a game changer, moving here. And so it really opened the doors for me, it really allowed me to do some great things here. And, um, I see a lot of other people, like you said, that have that work ethic that have grown and grow fast, um, you know? And so if you bring that like work ethic that you have, this is a great place. I mean, it's a great place, it's growing, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity, whether you want to start a business, a small business, big business, um, you know, and it's just because of who is here. One of the things that I, I think that also, maybe you touched on too, is the people. The people that are moving here and the people that we have here, I could tell you, I mean, from being at different places and going to different places, we have something special, like as far as, like, people always, like, they help each other. They want to help each other, they want to grow, they want to do what's best for everyone, not just themselves, but it's, it's like, it is a melting pot here, right?
Yeah, it is.
And so, you know, the thing is, is like, we have so many different people from all, you know, when's the last time you've heard somebody who's actually born and raised in Florida? It doesn't happen very often.
Correct.
And so they're moved here, so like they've been displaced and now they're here and it, and I don't know what it is and maybe it just kind of changes them, but everybody's friendly, everybody wants to welcome them. And, you know, and so it's, it's a different atmosphere here and I think that attracts a lot of people too.
No, it really does. I think that everybody has goals and everybody's being helped to achieve those goals and everybody's linking together and I see it all the time and it's just an awesome thing to see, for sure.
So what's a, so how's it feel to be like, okay, you're now officially a politician? Does that sound weird?
Yeah.
Because like you said it and they're like, a politician, I'm like, well, that's this kind of...
I mean, you know, I never really want to consider myself a politician, I want to consider myself more a servant of the people and because that's what I am. And I just want to make sure that, you know, uh, things that need to be done that the constituents want to get done, that we get them done.
Right.
Right? And that we're making the best decisions, uh, that we can possibly make because, you know, you, you're gonna have two sides, things are gonna pull you. And I think honestly, it just kind of goes, you know, when you're making a decision, make the right decision, uh, that you believe in your heart and you just keep moving forward. Um, but, man, I, you know, it really hasn't hit me yet, you know? I mean, next Tuesday, I swear in and I'm sure it'll hit me then.
Right.
But I will tell you that, you know, this is gonna be, um, the biggest honor, uh, one of the biggest honors of my life that I, that I could possibly do is serve the people and I enjoy it, I really do. Um, you know, during all the hurricane relief, we were able to, you know...
You guys did a lot of stuff.
Provide like six, I, I mean, was able to deliver, you know, six truckloads of just supplies to people here in Mante County and it was just a blessing to be able to get to do that. Um, and, and join arms with that, but, you know, it's, it's gonna be an honor to serve the people and that's what I'm here to do, you know? I'm here to serve the people, so.
So, I mean, that, so where are you, not that I'm, so do you see yourself like staying in politics as a career politician?
I don't know.
You don't know? I mean, is this gonna be a long-term thing? You'd be like, okay, one day be like...
I'm taking it one day.
For governor.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I think the main thing is you gotta take these things one day at a time. I mean, I don't have, like, my heart's not like, oh, I gotta be this other position. No, right now I gotta serve as a county commissioner and that's kinda where my focus is at. Is how I can make the life better for constituents here in Manatee County. And really hone in and focus on that because I know, I know there's politicians that they're doing this so they can, they can step up to the next position. Or, you know, they're doing it so they can get promoted or whatever it may be. That's not where my heart's at. My heart is, is sincerely to serve the people of this county, to make sure that, you know, I serve them to my best capability that I can serve them in. And ensure that, you know, moving forward, that we have an amazing place to continue to live in.
And saying, I wish more politicians or people would be, or like you, because the thing is, is like, look, you're here, you got elected into office for a reason, right? And it's to serve the people. I mean, that's your job. And I mean, that's why you got, you got elected, is to serve the people. And, you know, and a lot of times that's not what it is, right? I mean, politics is like, you're just like, that's politics, right? You know, and, and I hate to say, it could be on both sides. It doesn't matter which side you're talking about. And so like, you know, you got this politics, these politics and they're just blah, and nobody wants to work together, nobody wants to work for the people.
Can't get anything done.
And you can't, right. And so it's like, you know, what, you know, but we're here for the people, you're here for the people, right? They're the ones entrusting our government to make sure that they do the right things, to make sure that we have the right stuff that's taken care of. You know, and, and that's why we voted for whoever it is that we voted for, whether you're on the left or you're on the right. You know, and that's the ultimate thing. And I think that is one of the biggest things that politics drives me nuts about. Is that, look, you're in government, you've been elected into, it's about the people, it's about the US, right? It's about all of us, not, you know, doing what's best for all of us, not just doing what's best for you. Or doing best with what your beliefs are in, right? Doing best what's for everyone. And, you know, and I sit here and I watch, you know, I've never been into politics more than I've ever been in the last three years. And I'm like, I've watched politics more than I ever have thought I would be into it. You know, and it's like, it's just like, but, you know, like you said, I mean, we, you know, we both raised our right hand and sworn in. And, you know, and we, we were, we made that obligation that, you know, we're here to fight for our country and the freedom that it has. You know, and for the people. And so at the same time, I think we, some people forget about that. You know, and it's people forget about all this, it's about the people, it's about our freedom. And, you know,
Well, that's the whole reason why. I mean, the primary role in an elected official is to what? Is to protect the rights of the people. There's a reason why you raise your right hand to defend the constitution, is because it's to protect people's rights, right?
That's why we are the USA.
Exactly. And everything else is secondary to that. And I think that we've lost touch with a lot of politicians who, who have lost touch in what their primary role is. And that will always be the forefront of my mind. And any decision that I make, I have to ask myself, how does this line up with the constitution? If I vote yes, does it breach it? If I vote no, does it breach the constitution and these people's rights? And that's the number one reason why everybody's in office. And a lot of people don't do that, know that. Like, you'll ask a lot of people, you know, what is the role of an elected official? And they'll say to hear to the right, or to hear to what people want them to do. Or, you know, to do what people want them to do, the people, right? And it's actually to protect your rights. First, all rights. And then everything else is secondary to that. So as long as you keep that as your number one mission is to protect rights, you can't go wrong. Period. Because you're telling me, i- if you, if you, if you say something in regards to breaching somebody's rights, you're gonna, you're essentially telling me you need to breach the constitution of the United States of America and I'm not gonna do it. I'm not going to. I've seen the blood that's been shed for it. I'm not about to start, you know, breaching the constitution because you have an opinion on something. Period. That's just where I'm at with it.
And I think a lot of people forget that, right? A lot of people died for that. So, you know, a lot of people gave up their lives or they gave up, you know, even if you're, you, you, you gave up your family time or you gave, you know, you've been, you know, let's say you were deployed or whatever it is, you know, and, you know, and so like, that's the thing. There's a lot of people that gave up a lot for that. And I think we forget that. And I think we forget that, you know, I hate, I don't wanna get on my soapbox, but, like, I forget that we are, that our freedom, you know, and what we, what we gave for, you know, what, everybody gave over throughout the US history. To be where we are today, you know, we look at some of these other countries, you know, what's going on in those countries and compared to what we have here. And it's like, dude, what is wrong with you? I just, sometimes, you know, I love people and I sometimes I just wanna shake them. I'm like, what is wrong with you? You don't realize how good you've had it. I've been to those third world countries. I've gone to those cities where like they're starving, they have no food, they can't afford shoes. I've done that kinda stuff. And I'm like, you don't realize how good you got it. And I'm like, and you're bitching about this? I just, it makes no sense to me. And, you know, and, and that's the frustrating part, you know, and it's like, you know, we're here and we, we need to keep our freedom and our liberty that I think most people don't get.
It's precious. It's very precious.
It is. And we have, we are very lucky to have been born or be part of something that is where we are.
Correct. Yeah, and everybody, you know, some people thank you, you know, thank us for our service. I said, you know what? It's an honor and a privilege to serve this country. Cause it truly is. You know, when you realize what we have here and the opportunities that we have here, you know, it's an honor and a privilege to get to serve this country.
Because if you think about it, I mean, you know, if you, if you think about what else is out there in the world except for the US, nobody's like us, nobody. And nobody has the freedom we have. Nobody has the freedom that we can sit here and say, I can go cut hair or I can go work on a car or I can go do this or I can go there or I can go move to Texas or I can go move. They just, this is what's great about our country. And if you start taking those rights away and you try to do other things, then you're making us just like the others, other countries that are out there. So, again, I'll get off my soapbox.
No, you're good, you're good. I love it.
You know, and so, but, so I wanna kinda get back a little bit to your campaign, cause I was thinking about this too. So, you know, one of the things that I always run, that I, that we see in politics, you were talking about like, the negative publicity and saying stuff to you. So what came out of that? I mean, I mean, cause like, like, look, I know you pretty well, at least I think I do. I'm like, what the hell does he's got that really could be negative? Oh wow, he was a sniper in the Marines? I don't know.
You know, I mean, when it comes to the negative campaigning, I mean, there's a strategy behind the negative campaigning. A lot of times when they're running negative ads on you and a lot of them, they know that they're behind. So, they, they just, you know, a lot of times they'll come up with things, you know?
You're like, where did this come from?
So, and so what happens is, is they're trying to knock down your credibility. Right? And so, we'd already built up our credibility so much that, you know, but like I said, by the time they were hitting us with negative ads, they weren't working. And because of that, the results shown that, you know, in a three-way race, we were able to win, you know, over almost sixty-three percent of the vote.
Cause you crushed it.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, my opponent, I had two other opponents. One came in at twenty-five and the other one came in, I think at like thirteen percent. So, um, so yeah, I mean, that's, you, you just kind of, that just showed that the grassroots worked, that what we did worked. And, um, we worked really hard because like I said, I mean,
You were everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, Carol's probably gonna be the, the toughest opponent that I ever faced in the, you know? And coming in as a newcomer, no name recognition.
Did they try to use that against you? Like you were brand new and you didn't really, no name and wasn't experienced?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, they're always gonna try to utilize that more experienced. Aspect in somebody's campaign if they've been there for a long time against a, a newcomer. But I will say that, you know, through that whole process, especially with the negative campaigning and things that, you know, were coming out, you know, we were expecting it. I mean, if you're gonna run against a sixteen-year incumbent, it's, they're not just gonna allow you to walk on in.
Right, they've been there for a while.
It's not, it's not just gonna happen. And, and like I, I've told Carol this, she, she was the hardest opponent. She, she will probably be the hardest opponent that I ever faced in, in my political career. And, you know, she was tough. And, uh, you know, she, she served sixteen years. She did an amazing service while she was in. And I give respect to her for that. But yeah, I mean, it, it was, you know, these campaigns, they can, there's a, there's a timeframe in there where it gets kinda crazy with the negative ads and the negative mailers.
How did it make you feel?
You know, it didn't really faze me. I think because I knew that I was expecting it. Right? And I was just, yeah, it didn't really faze me. I just kinda continued to stay focused.
I would've been like, I've been like cussing around and be like, what the fuck are you talking about?
No, it really, it really honestly, it really did not faze me at all because I kinda was expecting it to happen.
See, I wouldn't be a good politician.
You know?
I would just recall them up and then scream at them.
You definitely have to have thick skin.
I mean, that's the thing, it's like,
But just know that if you're gonna get into, um, politics, that, and you're gonna run for office, there's gonna be a time and place where you're gonna have to hit negative stuff and they're gonna look up everything they can on you.
Try to find everything.
They're gonna have an opso on you and they're gonna go all the way back and they're gonna find every little thing that they can find on you to use on you as a negative ad, right? Whatever's gonna work. And, and so, you know, um, with me, I didn't really have anything on me. So, it's kinda like they had to make up stuff.
You were nice and clean.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so I get it though. I mean, they're not just gonna allow you just to walk on in. I mean, they're gonna try to find something or pick something or twist something or whatever it might be.
They try to sway a vote.
Yeah, to try to sway a vote. And, you know, in this particular case, it didn't work. So.
Just interesting, cause like I always find it, like, I mean, I think that's part of the worst part about politics is when you start seeing all the negative parts of it. And you start seeing negative campaign after negative campaign after negative campaign. And you're like, can we just stick to our issues a little bit here? You know, because at the end of the day, I mean, I get it, they work, they have to work or they wouldn't do them, right? So like, that's why they do them. But like at some time, you're, at some point, you're like, dude, it's like, you know, can we just run on your merits? And just, you know, what you are willing to do that you think is better than whatever it is, the person you're going against, right? And I think the thing is, is like, it just, it frustrates me and I don't.
Well, I think it frustrates you and I think it frustrates a lot of people with the negative ads because, you know, I got a lot of feedback, like, you know, there were people that were upset, you know, that all these negative ads, it wasn't just me. I mean, it was in the other races as well.
It was across the country. I mean, or, you know, even, even across the state, right? So, you know, this person said this person about this or this person said that. And it's like, I get it. I mean, obviously they work or they wouldn't be doing it. Or they would spend the money that they do and they all do it. It's just like, I just like, part of me is like, that's, that's the part of the politics I don't like. And, you know, and I was like, look, I'm, you know, tell me why, tell me why you're the good guy. Why are you going to come in and change things or that kinda thing? You know, not because, you know, you're, you're a person over there, you know, slept with two other people or something like that or whatever it might be. You know, and it's just, it's kinda, but, you know, again, I don't.
That's the world.
That's the world of politics.
When is Chris gonna run?
I just told you, I was like, dude, I always sit there and it wouldn't be good for me. Politics would not be good for me.
No, it takes a certain individual. I mean, you have to, I mean, you're putting yourself out there. I mean, just know that anybody that's gonna run, you're, you're literally putting yourself out there.
Even for like a show like this, right? I put myself out there. And, and I get people comment on my, on like, you know, some of my posts or like they'll comment on my stuff. And they'd be like, total trash. Or you'd be like, all boring or stuff like that. You know what I mean? So you get those people out there and it's like, you're not gonna please everyone.
No, you're not.
You're just not. And it's like, and if you don't realize that you're not gonna please everyone and take it personally, you'll never be successful.
Exactly. You just gotta keep it moving and keep focused on your mission, on what you have been called to do and what you're supposed to do and just stay focused on that. Like one, one thing about me is I'm laser focused. When I got my mindset to something, I have goals, I just go and I attack them, you know, whatever goals those might be.
Funny you say that, cause I put a post on Facebook today and it was about hustle, right? And about whatever your hustle is. So your hustle was you to become the next county commissioner, right? And what I was, what people don't understand is, is that when I put a post, they think it's about, about hustle, it's about money. And it's not about, always about money, right? And that's the thing, it's like, you wanted to do something to change what we had here. And that was your hustle, right? You were hustling every day. Your hustle could be whatever you wanted to be. And I was just like, I'm sitting here and like this person's like, well, you know, you need to, you know, you have this. And, and I, and I had one person that says, I, you know, I hate the hustle mentality. And I'm like, but your hustle could be whatever you wanted to be. What if it's, your hustle is to be the best father? Or the best soccer coach to your son's team? It could be whatever you want. It doesn't have to be about money. Like my wife, which is a bodybuilder, who likes to work out. She don't make no money. That cost me money. A lot of money, right? And, you know, the same thing with like the podcast. The podcast, I don't make any money from this. But it costs me a good amount of money. And so, you know, and, but it's like, you know, and that's the thing, I think everybody thinks that they're just in it for the money. Or they're in it for like the politics or they're in for this, right? And it's just like, it's, you know, and, and that's the thing is like, I think there's people out there like you, and I believe even like me, that wanna do good. That wanna change things, right? Part of the reason I do my posts every morning is because I'm so sick of negativity. The reason I do my podcasts is because I wanna share highlighted people that have been successful without all the negativity, right? You run into all this stuff and I just, I, we, I feel like we live in a world that's nothing but negative. Like people live on the negative. And so like,
That's what they feed on.
You know, and that's, and it's like, I don't wanna be in that world. I want people like you in my world, right? You know, and, and, and that's the thing. And I think,
Well, I appreciate that, Chris.
Well, you know, and that's why like the people that I have on here is people that are people like you that wanna do, make a change. Whether it's in their business, whether it's in the government, whether, it could be an actor, right? I mean, that actor or actress, she can be out there hustling, doing gigs for nothing to build her business, right? Cause a lot of these actors and actresses that I have on my, on my podcast sometimes, they do a lot of stuff and they don't get paid for it. Right? And so they don't realize that, you know, they're just an actor, you know, or whatever they're making, and they think, but that's their hustle. And that's what they like, right? So, you know, and that's why like for you, it's like, it's kinda nice and it's refreshing to see. It's like you wanna do something to help our area, our people, our four hundred and twenty thousand people growing by every day, right? And really give back to the community and do something to say, hey, I'm here to help instead of, hey, you know, this is the way that we do it.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's it. It's just, you know, whatever you're doing, you know, do a hundred and ten percent. Like, don't leave it on the table. Don't leave anything out on the table. Just give it everything you have.
And that's what you do with your campaign, right? You put everything into it. Cause like, I mean, like I said, I mean, I saw you everywhere. And you were just putting everything you had into this campaign.
All those signs you saw, those, they, that was all me. I put all those, those big signs.
There's one said like right next to our neighborhood.
Yeah, all those big ones that you saw, uh, I put up like ninety percent of those.
That's a lot of work.
County. It was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work.
I busted my butt in the heat, in the middle of this July heat, you know, putting those signs in. But, you know, and I had to knock on doors to get permission and, you know, it was a lot. It was a lot of work.
See, that's what I think people don't realize is everything that went into your campaign and everything that you went in to do what you did. Because, you know, you pretty much live and breathe and eat and sleep this campaign, right? To try to, to win.
I can only imagine like the presidency, like how the president and how much campaigning, like Donald Trump, how much campaigning? I mean, I can't even imagine.
It's non-stop.
It's literally on the, either on the plane or on the bus. Like mine was just a little old county. I can't imagine what it's like on a national scale.
Like, cause you're probably traveling from city to city every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every single day. You have a speaking engagement, you have to shake hands, you gotta,
Kiss babies?
Exactly. I mean, I can't even imagine, you know, like Donald Trump, I mean, he, he worked. He works hard, right? That's one of the hardest working guys I've ever seen. And, cause I know what he's doing, right? I, I, I don't think I've ever seen anybody running campaigns like him on a grassroots.
Right. Cause he's not a career politician.
No, he's not. And I just saw him time and time again. He would just be on the next bus, go to the next place, be on the bus, get on, go to the next place. I mean, it was just crazy. I mean, he could prob, he'd possibly be like two or three places or four places in a day. Just doing speaking engage. Can you imagine that? And you're doing that, not for six months, you're doing that for a year or two.
Right. That's insane.
Just non-stop, just going at it.
Thing is like, and then you gotta also look at it, okay, from his age standpoint, having that, you know, okay, what's he in his seventies, eighties, whatever he's in. And you're doing that day in, day in, day in, day in. I mean, that takes, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
It's a lot of endurance.
It's a lot of endurance. I mean, you know, and if you could do that, then I think that's like, okay, well, wow, he can, he's got good endurance. He can, he can run, he can run the country. You know, and, um, I think, you know, that's one of the things people don't realize either is how much goes into all this. That's kinda why I wanted to have you back on the show because I don't think so many, you know, all the process and all the campaigning or all the like events that you gotta put on and all the fundraising and finding all this support. And then your poor wife's like going,
She's got the kids too at the house. No, I mean, my wife gets so much credit. I mean, God bless her. She, she's an amazing woman. And, uh, but yeah, I mean, it was a lot of work. I mean, the last two weeks of the campaign, we made over fifteen thousand calls. I mean, we were on the phones. I mean, I did that with volunteers, but we were on the calls, we were texting, we were, you know, sending out voicemails, we were doing whatever we can just to get those votes. Let me tell you, I mean, that face-to-face interaction is, I mean, that, that, that's a game changer when you're able to do that and it makes so much difference in a campaign.
So, when the primaries were started, when you actually beat out Carol, okay, I had no idea that there wasn't a Democrat person. So I didn't realize that there wasn't anybody there. And I was sitting there, I was like, okay, well now he's gotta go through the Democrat. And then I was like, no, there's nobody there. I'm like, what? And I'm like, okay, so you pretty much, once you won, you won that one, you pretty much knew unless you got like a crazy amount of writings.
I mean, I had a couple of writings that I was going against. But yeah, that's the big race is the primary. Typically in Manatee County or Red County, they don't, Democrats don't typically put up a, a candidate for an at-large position. Or at-large seat. So, you know, I think I won a hundred and twenty-three thousand votes is what I ended up with in the general election. That was more than Ron DeSantis. But of course I didn't, they had Democrats, I didn't have anybody going against me. So that's the difference.
That was kinda cool too, cause like, right, was that, I mean, when you get a vote and for the, we just had a few weeks ago. How cool was it just to see your name on there?
Oh, it was a great feeling.
I mean, just to see your name, it's like, yeah, this is me.
Yeah, no, it was a great feeling, um, to know that, you know, Yeah, no, it was a great feeling, um, to know that, you know, you know, cause once, like I said, once you win the primary, you know, you.
You pretty much knew, especially that one, because you didn't have anybody going against you.
It's very unlikely that a write-in is going to be true.
Right.
Yeah.
So you kind of knew, but like, it's like, you know, but you know, it's not, you don't know until it's actually over for sure.
I think we ended up winning like 93% of the vote.
Okay.
Of the county. So.
That's got to feel kind of cool. Cause I remember when I was voting and I saw your name there, I was like, that's my buddy. I was like, I know him. He's my neighbor too. I was like, so that was kind of cool.
It was a great feeling. I mean, it was, um, it was a great feeling knowing that, you know, that we were going to be able to, to win this whole thing, you know, so.
So what's next?
What next is?
I know you got to sign in, right? You got to swear in, right?
Next Tuesday, I swear in on the 22nd.
So can you give us any kind of what your plans are or?
My, I'm honing in on our infrastructure.
Okay.
Uh, I think that we need to really catch up with our infrastructure. I think once we fix our infrastructure, everything else will fall in place. And then economic development, uh, those two, those two things are, are on my radar. Number one is our infrastructure, because we're affected by that every single day. We have to get in our car every single day. We have to possibly sit in traffic every single day.
Oh my god. And it's even worse now, snowbirds are here.
Yeah. So I want to figure out a way that we can cut, um, our timeframe, right? If we're 15 years behind, how can we, question is how can we cut that in half to maybe seven and a half years? I knew anytime we're looking at things like that, it takes money. So we're going to have to be kind of creative in, in regards to.
So what are you thinking? You thinking new roads? You thinking like lights, switching lights going to roundabouts or?
Yeah, I mean, essentially roads, um, that will have a more steady flow of traffic. You know, roundabouts, you know, um, just looking at the macro picture of the county. And, cause that's me, right? I'm at large. So I'm not necessarily looking at, um, I'm helping within the districts, but what I'm looking at is an overall picture of the county and seeing how we can improve the lives, the lives of each citizen in the county, right? So that's like looking at the overall picture and the macro situation of the county and saying, how can we improve our infrastructure? How can we speed up and cut down the infrastructure timeframe of, of it being built to where, you know, we can, we can manage what's going on. Because guess what? We still have people, we're not stopping people from moving here, right?
Right.
They're going to continue to move here every single day. And every year we're gaining more and more people. So we need to really strategically look at the overall picture and see how we can approach it in a way to cut down our timeframe of what used to be 15 years to maybe in half. And so that's just kind of looking, um, looking at the overall picture and, and talking to people and seeing what we can do to come up with a solution. I'm all, I, I'm all ears. I, I don't, you know, I'm not a know-it-all. I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm going to talk to the experts in regards to how we can do this, right? But I have a mission. All right. I want to get here.
Right.
Show me how I get here.
Right.
Right? And if it takes money or if it takes employees or whatever that might be, that's, that's how I'm going to go in because I'm not going to, I'm not going to accept anything less. I'm going to say, how can I get from this point to this point? And how can I do it in a more faster manner? So.
Cool. Looking forward to it. This was fun today.
Yeah, it was great, Chris. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate you having me. Looking forward to watching you grow. We're looking forward to see how everything goes with the county.
Yeah.
It's going to be fun. It's going to be fun to watch you. So, so how long do you hold the office now?
Four years. So it's a four-year term. So, um, I hold that office for four years and, uh, you know, up for reelection after that.
Awesome.
So.
I'm looking forward to watching you. It's pretty cool to watch. It's pretty cool to know somebody who's like being part of that too.
Yeah.
It's like, it's kind of a fun thing. So, awesome.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Well, thank you for coming on.
Well, thanks for having me.
All right.
You can help support our podcast by checking out our Real Hustle gear. We have t-shirts, hoodies, tank tops, hats and more. Let everyone know that you're a real hustler, willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. You can check us out right now on realhustle.com. And right now, we are offering all of our listeners 10% off when you use the promo code PODCAST at checkout. Once again, that is PODCAST to receive 10% off your entire order.